To order at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pegg.
Thank you for attending this month's work session. At this time, we're going to move, we have a couple of auctioneer companies here to present us for the potential sale, auction of the OAL elementary. I ask that Billy Work from Work Auction Solutions come forward. Before I met with Mr. Work last week, I asked him to be here tonight to give you his proposal and answer the questions you may have of Mr. Work and his company for auction on OAL or his elementary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Billy Work, the owner of Work Auction Solutions. Just located here in Uniontown, PA. I got to meet with Mr. Pegg last week and whatever, and I've looked at the potential auction that you guys are looking for at the elementary school. I just got a little packet there together for you this evening. There's just a general flyer in there of what all we do. This is an upcoming auction that we'll be having this Friday at 45 Miller Avenue in Uniontown, PA. Also, there's a sample contract in there that's kind of the guideline that we typically run our auctions by, a general contract which you guys as a representative will have to sign to move forth with the auction. In the meeting the other day, we spoke a little bit about different methods, what would be best suit for you guys, what kind of real estate auction that would suit best for you. We discussed a little bit in terms of marketing and strategy. I took it upon myself this weekend to do a little bit more research in that department as far as who would be a potential buyer for school. So I came up with a couple of good ideas that I think we can find a buyer for. There is utility out of these buildings, they're across the country. I did a little research on who might, you know, be the purchaser of this. Obviously, the auction method, we want to drive the price. So we would like to be as close to an end user as possible. That way, we can get the most we can out of the property. I also discussed a little bit how we operate. We work on a buyer's premium. So if your property brings a value of $100,000, you guys would receive $100,000 and the buyer would pay the premium on top of, you know, the $100,000. So the final contract price would be $110,000. I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about any timelines or expectations or questions on how it would work. I guess I could visualize having us obviously signage, you know, a marketing campaign. Obviously, we hit the local market for other horizons, even nationally for youth programs and things like that to utilize the building and get the most value out of it that we could. But, you know, at this time, I don't know if you have any direct questions that you might need answered?
What specifically can we expect to get from your company if you select it?
What would you specifically get is, I'm, you know, the marketing manager for our company, so you'll have my backing 100%. We try to do about one to two auctions per month, so we'll get, you know, the utmost attention from our company and our staff to make sure all the eyes are dotted and t's are crossed and everything like that, so that you guys will be getting the most full attention that you can.
Bill, can you explain to the board your passion about combination auction, like you can market through parcels or sell all together? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. We spoke with the real estate there across the way, there across the street. There are, we, there could potentially with some investigation to see how we could offer in separate parcels if we broke it up into, you know, the school on one side and wanted to sell the lot on the other side. You know, we'd have to see the zoning restrictions and get it reassessed. But, you know, tying that with the school, potential school buyer and that other lot, you know, wouldn't necessarily have to go hand in hand. You could maybe have two different uses there, so that might maximize your profit. One, what we would do is we would offer subject A, then subject B, and then combine those two together, and whatever the greater value would be, that would be the value that you guys would receive. So if the school brings, like I use the term $100,000, the school brings $100,000 and the lot brings $150,000, we put them both together, we were reopening the bidding. If it gets in excess of bid of $150,000, then we accept the greater, the greater piece of that.
If we would have to reserve on that auction, what would be the charge then if they didn't sell, they comped themselves?
Yeah, that's something that I was asking Mr. Pegg a little bit, you know, the further we get into this, that we'd have to discuss, you know, what the reserve would be, we'd have to come on terms of this. Typically, you know, we sign everything. The only thing that you guys would be at risk would be the marketing fee. We'd establish a marketing budget that would, that could be taken out. Well, if we put a reserve on it, then it would have to pay, be paid upfront for the marketing. But, you know, there wouldn't be no charge if there was a no sale. We tried to sign the properties with the intent to sell them, so, you know, we want to be in this project with you. If we don't sell the property, we seek to no reward, nor do you. But the greater we sell the property at our commission base structure, the higher that we both receive. So it's more like a partnership than it would be, you know, you're not just hiring me to do a service for an X amount of value, you know, it would be more structured along the lines of that.
How do I forget to get on the market?
We could go as soon as you want. I'd say we've run one a 60-day campaign at least, you know, as soon as you guys are ready to go. Obviously, with much concern, you guys would probably want to get, you know, wrapped up before winter. A big building like that could have lots of live buildings before you go into the winter stretch, you know, as far as eating, you know, everything else, plowing and everything. So we could get it off, you know, get it off and running as quickly as you guys would be ready to go.
What is the marketing budget? What would that be, be approximately?
Well, just something of this stature, I'd say roughly between $2,000 and $3,000 just to do it accurately. Just saying that, I mean, a typical residential fee might be a little less than that, but just wanting to make sure we cover all our bases. You know, marketing, you know, I don't receive any benefit of a marketing budget, but, I mean, that's the best dollars that we can spend, you know, trying to get this advertised in the best place possible.
So if we set a reserve and the auction price is higher than the reserve, do you take your percentage and the budget, marketing budget, or would that be, would that be included within your percentage if we sell above the reserve?
No, it would be a separate fee. So it would be a separate fee. So what, like I said, what we could do, if we did establish a reserve price, then it would be a separate fee. But there would be no percentage coming off of your guys' net.
And what is the percentage that you would be charging for the seller?
The buyer premium?
Yeah, it's part of the premium.
Yeah, buyer premium. So the percentage wouldn't be on you guys, it would be to the customer.
If the contract you presented stands and selling would be paying the same, right? So that would be?
Well, yeah, there's two parts there. That would be marked as zero for you seller.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Then if you read further down, then that's where we would attach the buyer's premium.
And then, like, for example, the auction listing that you had in this package looks like a comparable commercial building of their nature. What did you do to market this, just, you know, just as a comparison? What did you do to market this one? Would you be doing something comparable or different?
Yeah, we would do something comparable, like I said, we-
I'm sorry, AL, yeah.
What's that?
I said the wrong school name, I'm sorry. You already heard it, AL wasn't-
Okay, it wasn't, yeah. The building like that, yeah, we, one, you know, through engaging in the real estate business for the past few years, you know, we have a buyer's basis to where we would potentially bring something of this about, so that would, you know, plus our local advertisement. We try to get it, you know, more directly. I try to put myself in a buyer's shoes to where someone would be looking for something like this, you know, some smaller shops, other things like that. And also, we've used some, with the equipment and things like that, of course, we've used a couple of national outlets as far as industrial machinery is concerned, just more market-specific stuff, not just some, you know, broad, there's so much market value, you kind of want to condense it to, you're getting the material, spending the money, getting it right in front of the right people. So we've done that with that sale. Obviously, with any sale signage is a big thing, but, you know, this is a specialized sale. We, you know, want to be targeting probably apartment builders. Like I said, I found some interesting things as far as youth programs and people that are looking for buildings like that across the country. So we'd more want to direct market to someone that could take full advantage of that building and space.
This is just a question I tend to ask of anybody that's back for work and wants to work here. How long has your company been in this?
We started a business on our own in January 1st this year.
How long have you been acting on license and auction here?
Three years now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any online bidding?
That's something that we typically don't do with real estate auctions, but I have looked into that as a matter that we might do, could do potentially for this one. I'd have to propose the idea just because it is a unique building and, you know, like I said, nationally, it looks like there is a some demand for buildings like this. So, you know, typically in the past, you know, we do personal property online, it just might open some windows that we don't want sometimes with the online bidding to be hindered. Usually, if someone's serious or someone, they'll come onsite, and we prefer that because they'll be required to make a payment that day that'll bound them for closing.
Any other questions for Mr. Work? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes, if there are any questions, they will be attached.
Okay.
Thank you. This time, Tia Walski from Joe Arpaio Auction Services.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tia Walski, this is Jordan Pyer, who represents the Joe Arpaio Auction Service. Joe Arpaio Auction Services has been in business for about 39 years, and we serve West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Kentucky, Delaware, and stuff. We have a pretty broad range of buyers. Just to give you kind of a brief overview on how the auction process would work, once you gave us the green light to get started on it, you would set an auction date about six weeks from then. In those six weeks, we market the property. With the marketing, we do targeted and direct mailing and email blasts. We make up a flyer that we would send out, we also post it locally. We do a lot of different newspaper ads, we have Herald, Standard, and True, Observer, Reporter, and many a post. We also do a lot of signage, we would put signage on the property, and we also use small signs that we would put through town, through Uniontown, Boarding Town, which is advertised as a commercial building. We would do drone videos and images that show the property from aerial views, that way it can be understood a little bit better. We also do a lot of digital search engine marketing, that would be up to 250,000 impressions. And then we do a lot of online marketing. And our online marketing consists of AuctionVib, GoToAuction.com. Our own website is Joe Arpaio's website. We also do a lot of social media marketing, right, Facebook, that type of thing. So once we've had all the marketing in place, we would have the auction onsite, we open the school building up about an hour ahead of time, let people do their own inspection. Everything is as and where is with an auction, which is nice, from a liability standpoint. Then we open the bidding, and then whoever the winning bidder is puts a 10% down, they have 60 days to close. So that's kind of the timeframe. And what we do with a school property typically is we advertise it subject to school board approval. So once we have our winning bid, they put their deposit down, we hold that in escrow, and then it's presented at a meeting, we're going to have a school board meeting, and then you have the auction then to approve or deny the bid. And then we also work on buyer's premium, which is 10% buyer's premium. So if Amber calls at $100,000, the buyer ends up paying $110,000, or this school would retain $100,000, and then we would take the 10%. And then we also have a marketing fee where you all pay the marketing. So that's, we budgeted around $2,500 for the marketing, and if the, if the school board does accept the bid, you will waive the marketing fee. So you could only pay the marketing fee for some reason, it's projected. Does anyone have a question?
$2,500, if you have a buyer, the board agrees to sell at that price, would you cost the one you're not buying?
Yes, we would take that out of our commission. And we've sold a lot of different schools in the past. I think we've sold for about six different counties in West Virginia, and we've also sold Perry Elementary School over at Perry's District in PA.
Does that hold the marketing, if we put a reserve on it and it doesn't sell?
If it doesn't sell, you do not pay the marketing fee, just because that's money that's spent.
Is your auction house offered online bidding?
So we typically for real estate don't offer online bidding, but we do allow phone and absentee bidding. So like, for instance, I have a couple of school buyers that are from, I have one guy from Minnesota and one from Ohio, and they just bid on any school that we offer. They don't come in through the auctions, but they fill out paperwork ahead of time, and then we have them on the phone during the auction so they can bid just like they're standing there.
Or any questions for Tia?
Yes, I have a question. Please underlie her.
Yes.
As far as have all been successful in selling?
Yes, these are past school sales, and then there's also a flyer in there for a fair chance sale we have coming up.
Just to give you an idea, I know that we, you are comparing now.
Right.
What, how much do you sell for them?
So the schools in Huntington, Geneva Penn, I believe it brought $140,000. The Peden Elementary brought, I think it brought around 80, but it was very, very accurate. Commercial Lot brought, I think mid-hundreds. Then our Barter County Schools, Volca Elementary brought, I think 105, and then Flemington did 80. And then in Randolph County Valley, it had 300. Perry Elementary over in PA brought 350, so it was pretty fun.
Before the auction, for actual preparations for the sale, would you come up with a valuation of the property that you feel is your $100,000, or do you leave it auctioned?
Well, I mean, we can give you kind of an idea of what we think it would bring, plus we do some research on it. But really with the auction, the auction's the best way to go with a school because you're fitting in an open-air atmosphere, and you kind of never know what somebody's going to use the school for, because people use them for all kinds of different reasons. So, you know, you get two people who are really interested in that property and really with an auction, this guy's a 11, because we just can't go for twice or triple what we think is going to price it. And with the two separate properties, I know we had the other lot as well, we did do research on that, and it is a separate parcel, so it is able to be sold to two separate individuals without having to go get some people or anything for that.
Any further questions from the board? Thank you. So the board, I do have, you don't have a board report from the principals, but however, I do have all principals here. If you have any questions for any of the principals at any of our schools, they're all within attendance. Any questions for principals?
This will be the last meeting before school opens. Have your maintenance concerns been addressed so far to your buildings, if you have any?
Name is first, Mr. Villa.
I spoke to Mr. Cheslow about some of our concerns with my playground area, the bell room ties, safety for our students, so he was aware of that, and also on our trailer in the back, the deck, the ramp part of it is in pretty bad shape at that point, that's in our playground area. But again, Mr. Cheslow is aware of those, please have it addressed.
I also spoke to Mr. Cheslow about the air conditioning itself. I believe we're waiting on a valve to be replaced in the boiler room so that the whole school has air conditioning.
Anyone else so far so quick?
Thank you. Bill, the rubber ties, would you order those to paint your playground?
Yes, I've talked, I've talked already to Mr. Todak, told him to go ahead and get a count for them. I counted about 12, he'd like to get about 14. It's well under $300 to get those. I told him to go ahead and please, you know, get those and proceed with those because they are watered out and it is a trip hazard. The deck also, I told him to take that off, and we're going to place a handrail across there to alleviate the handicap ramp going into that trailer. The ramp and everything is good, but there's squinters that can be getting by the kids. They play on it, run up and down it, could trip and fall. So we're going to put, take that off and just put a set of steps going in. If the steps are there, we're going to take the deck off, just put a handrail and alleviate the ramp.
What about the valve at South?
The valve at South, I was going to do that in my maintenance report. It is due to start on August 16th. They figure about two days will be without air those two days, but it will be completed by then. We do have partial air for the entire school. The valve is stuck at about a half, half position is where it broke at. So we are getting some cooling, we're just not getting full cooling.
How is the, how's the freshman body, is student parking lot a mess?
It's a mess.
Not good.
It's a mess.
Well, I'm just, we're, we're talking now.
It's a mess.
Is it going to be a non-mess for the start of school or thing?
They're promising me that all our corrections on our property are to be taken care of before school starts, and I've been hounding them on that. They said per contract, they don't have to bring grass in until September, but they're going to start ahead of time. They're going to come in, renovate the parking lot, they have to redo the track also, the running track that they tore completely out, putting the line.
Okay, since what about the high school, the metal detectors? I haven't had a chance to go over it, has anything happened with that, installation?
We've set them up, and I've ran through them a couple times. What's that?
I'm going to try to talk to them.
Yeah, come on over, we'll run you through them a couple times. We, we've set them up there in cafeteria, so we're kind of getting a feel for them. We got a couple tables. I don't think the bag scanners will be here in time, so when school starts, we're going to start out with three metal detectors, see how that goes. But I think for the most part, we'll be okay. They're going to go in that lobby area behind the security desk and begin, we're looking to run the cape, or, sorry, run the electric through there. So we'll see. We're going to try to practice with football, or a band, or somebody, you know, to get, be used to it, but they're, they're pretty nice, they're real nice.
We do have the, had all the quotes that we had asked for, so we, I believe, if you have that information, you'll work with that later. We'll have that installed next week, all the electrical work, the ice cream-
They're supposed to start this week, sir, and-
This week?
This week, they're supposed to start, and it'll probably take, it'll take one day at the high school and probably one day at North and South to finish up, two days. So if they can get started earlier this week, they'll have both, all three locations finished up this week.
I know the bids came in relatively close, a lot less than what techers had projected. One company, none of their employees have clearances. If they would achieve this, we'd only buy about $100 or so, I think $150 bucks, so I wasn't comfortable worrying, you know, them with work without having clearances. We have students there who care about the CBA and football and so on and so forth, so that more was a worry for second-class quote. Okay, yeah. I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Cheslow, I happen to be at French Appeal, I've visited a few schools, I maneuvered around four potholes in the parking lot there.
That's on our list to do. We do that in-house, we go through those, we get the cold patch and go around and try to patch them up as best we can and everything and stuff. It's better if I do it with the high school crew because they have the box truck and it's heavier, and what we do is we clean the hole thoroughly, put the cold patch in, and they roll it in with the box truck, which is heavier, and it compacts it in better, and it seems to stay a lot better than the guys just putting it in and trying to can. So that's on slate, but I'm, I'm down to one guy at the high school and one guy at North, so I'm trying to-
And other things that I noticed, I happened to be at A.T.S. South today to visit Mr. Villa in Fortico. What's going on with Fortico?
The what, ma'am?
Fortico.
I'll correct the bus. Who got the bill again?
Well, originally, we was going to scrape it and paint it. There is lead there. I went and took a lead certification renovator's course on my own and paid $250 out of my own personal pocket so I could make these guys feel at ease and get the job done correctly. Since then, Mr. Pegg and I have talked, and they decided to put metal over that. I have to design that, bid that, and go with that. With all the projects and everything I have going on, I'm going to wait till I get some of this stuff done to get moving on it. I just don't have enough time, I need to.
Fortico's been an area of concern for at least a year.
Yes, we started it last year, if you remember, and everybody started complaining about the lead, and I got the testing equipment and everything and stuff. We ran out of time in the last year at the end of the year. And then we was starting it at the beginning of this year, I had them start scraping, and one of the employees went through the internet and read a bunch of stuff and picked up pieces of it and did not understand what he was reading or whatever. So I went and took the lead renovator supervisor's course, paid for it on my own at no cost to the district to get this job started and moving. Well, then we didn't, then we're not going to do it, now we're going to put metal on. So that's what I guess we want to do.
I did ask Mr. Cheslow to get a price of what would be cost to cover that instead of having our guys, our people scrape it and then paint it. I don't believe you've gotten a price for that yet.
No, sir, I have not had enough time to even start with that.
To, you know, figure that, get the work done, if we, if we cover it, we're not five or 10 years down the road having to paint it again as it's flaking off, but that would probably be a long-term fix if it was a reasonable cost. So I asked him if he had that information so we could present that to the board and hear from you.
Third question, if that's not a reasonable alternative, then we're stuck for another year with P and P for it because Mr. Cheslow said after he wanted to wait for the students to earn it.
Correct. If we wait, if we wait till the students are in school, then all the guidelines change. With the students out of school, anything you need is a respirator, goggles, gloves, and a tieback suit is anything you need. If we go with the students in school, then you're going with negative pressure, you're building a, you're, you're calling in a company. Our people aren't certified to do that. We'll have to build a containment, go with negative air, we'll have to do different cleanups and everything.
So why weren't we talking about this in April or May, so that we would break this beginning of summer out the gate, be able to deal with this?
In April and May, we were going to scrape it ourselves. That was the game plan, and that's what we went with. Then the employees threw a fit, then I went and took my test, and then this has all changed. I've done everything in line since the beginning of school year, it's just that, it's the way it's called.
I, I did receive a few calls with employees, and I did ask Bill to hold off, don't direct you to do the work until we're 100% sure that the way you were planning to do this work was going to be safe for the- until we're 100% sure that the way we were preparing to do this work was going to be safe for the employees. I didn't want to put anybody at risk, but there was a lot of kickback as far as having it scraped. So that's what Bill did know and took a class where he explained. And we could do that, but at this point in the year, you know, we still wanted, I said, well, instead of paying it, let's look into getting a wrapped, the VOTEC did that recently, about the state of it. And that is something that would be a long-term fix, but we want to talk about paying it, paying it on end in two or three years. It would be fixed, it's covered, there's no worries. So that's kind of what we hoped, what we hoped was, was pay jobs getting for a couple employees that were not covered for the scraping.
But at this point, I mean, the condition is we get, I mean, the beyond, if he was supposed to start, so is it not him to hide it from that customer?
Well, if he gets a price and comes in decent for covering it, we could do that anyhow. It doesn't need to be done right aside.
Okay, what about, what needs to just say how the listeners is being in next school?
Well, that's if you're going to spray it and paint it. You know, the kids are in school, that changes.
We don't want to do that.
Changes, they don't want to do that with kids in crisis.
So, Mr. Cheslow, who have you reached out to for prices on the cover?
I have not reached out to anybody yet. I have not had enough time to do that yet.
Oh, just continue on. I happened to be at Smithville today. I saw a repair of a sink and a bathroom. Will that be repaired again?
Yes, it will. I've talked to my employees. When I take custodians and put them in maintenance and they go out and do things on their own, this is what we get. I can't keep...
You are the person that needs to direct them. That's more.
I can't micromanage them and do everything I'm doing also. I understand they did a poor job. I've talked to the people and I've asked them to correct the situation and we will correct the situation. That's not the way to do it. The problem is, is the people I'm getting to do these jobs for me are not qualified. That's the whole problem. And I've got two guys on one side, two guys on the other side, the two guys here is splitting up, the two guys over there is splitting up. They're going four directions. I can only go in one. Plus I have duties at the office, I've got duties with the D E P, I've got duties everywhere. I've got, how many projects going on right now?
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but as the head, what is your official title?
Director of Facilities Operations.
Okay, so does that not imply that it's your job to lead, manage people?
Ma'am, I can only be in one place at one time. I'm sorry, I can only be in one place at one time. I've worked a four block today on a sewage line over here, plus trying to get here and get everything else done.
Are you saying then, as this one now, that you physically need to be present for any repair that's going to happen? Is that how, that's how you're running it now?
I can't be physically, because there's four guys. How can I be in four different places?
But as the leader, you shouldn't have to be physically present at all times.
If I had qualified people and everywhere, I wouldn't have to worry about being in every position. I wouldn't have to be everywhere.
So, but that's how you're running it now, that you want to be physically present when any of these things are done?
I would like to be physically present on a lot of stuff, but I can't be in two places at once. When he went and did that repair, I was not there. I can't stand with each guy on each repair every day long. There's four of them, there's only one of me. Plus my duties to the school board, the school district and everything else. I would love to be everywhere at once.
The problem with the entire work that was done, is that, is that at Smithville? Will that, that will be addressed?
I have dressed, I have dressed the maintenance man that did that. I want him to correct it. He has been on vacation now for two weeks. I mean, when he comes back, I'm going to take him over and show him how to properly repair a sink like that.
So, Mr. Cheslow, as the head of the department, what is your suggestion of what needs to happen for these things to start happening in a timely, efficient way?
We can only do so much with what we have, ma'am.
So do you have no recommendations on what we can do as a school board to help with this job?
We used to have 12 maintenance crew, we're down to four. The last one, the couple that's hired, I mean, they're, I'm sorry to say, they're custodians that are put into these positions. You, I have to be with them when they work on pneumatics, I have to be with them when they work on electrical, on kitchen supplies and everything, so. And when it comes to a proper, a sink installation, a normal partner should be able to do something like that. But, you know, while I'm over here working with this one, this one's doing this, how can I be in two places at once, ma'am?
Well, Mr. Cheslow, you had a project going on at French Appeal and one of these custodians called you to question if it was even up to code. You said it was up to code.
Yes, it was up to code.
And then the next day, you sent people out to replace it.
I was directed to do that, yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Cheslow, this is the one you could, could you please review the options for the gym floor, re-code it for the high school? For those of you that don't know, we have a company that did the original work on the floor. It was beautiful. That same company, which contracted people in and do the maintenance work over the summer. And every day we finished, Mr. Cheslow, Mr. Dupont, Mr. Hutchinson and I noticed that there was some disc coloring in the finish along with some dirt and stuff in the finish that we had addressed. We did close contact numerous times with the owner of the company on how they're going to correct the problem, what they suggest. So, Mr. Cheslow, would please review those options from that company? I'm sorry, is it S and S?
Yes. Dave from S and S is the owner of the company. I've been in touch with him ever since the second day we noticed the floor was in horrible shape. His option, his main thing was, he wanted to find out why it did it. I've told him numerous times, I don't care, I just want it redone. He had the company come out from Kansas and inspect the floor. We still don't, we still don't know what they came up with. But Dave from S and S came up with basically three options for us. The option one is to completely sand the floor back down to bear wood, start over and refinish the floor. He wants to do this over the Christmas break time, which I believe if we try to rush him through at Christmas break, it's going to turn out bad again because he's rushing.
If I could interrupt, Mr. Cheslow, I particularly didn't like that option either because at Christmas break, you do have boys' basketball, girls' basketball, wrestling basketball.
Exactly.
Wrestling team, they're there and I do not like that option. I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
That was also, my next point was, is if we need to gym floor over that point in time. His section, second option under that one was to completely sand the floor down in the following spring afterward, out of school, which would be the best option in my opinion. His third option was, is to leave the floor as it is. Come in and re-code it next year, the following year and the following year. He would give us four years of free re-coding, which would save us roughly about $2200, 21, or $22,000, or $22,000. But we would have to live with the floor the way it looks. And then at that time...
Isn't this a brand new floor? It's a brand new floor.
Yes, ma'am. That option I do not believe in because he ruined it, he needs to fix it.
Can I say something? We're caught in between. He's blaming the product, he's blaming, the guy who does the S and S is blaming the product guy, where he got his product. It's not the same finish that they put on the first time they did it, it's a different finish. Sixty-four, it's supposed to be the best, blah, 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 blah. However, no one checked it, no one did anything to determine what it is. The yellow stuff coming out of the floor, as of right now, when they cut it out, the guy from Arkansas who was flown in, cut the floor out. When we're talking to the guy from S and S, he's not telling us what the other guy said. So now they're in a battle. Our bottom line is, give us an option that we can get this floor fixed. All the options that he gave us was $22,000, $25,000 over the long term. Whether he comes in next summer, refinishes it, takes it down to the wood, has Steve Cow stickers and everything, back down to the wood and redoes it, it's done.
At his cost.
At his cost, nothing towards the district.
There's no, we're not...
He did, he did.
And they did a fabulous job, but they switched product, as Mr. Hutchinson said. Didn't notify us that they switched product with how they were going to finish the floor and coat it. So what they're going to do, what I...
What I, it was an installation problem.
There's work behind the story and we're the third party.
But the person that we have the contract with is the one that is responsible to us to make it right.
Yes.
It doesn't matter whether it's the material, whether it was the installation...
Correct, and that's the guy who's giving us...
Okay, we have the contract.
Yes.
Okay, what's the timeline? When, when was this done and when was the yellow news?
We're talking six, we're here. Right, right.
Okay, we're talking six weeks ago.
Correct.
Six weeks ago, this was...
He kept telling us that he was waiting on the guy from Kansas, Kansas or Arkansas to see about the product.
But see, that was irrelevant.
Well, that's what we told him.
Because he...
We had all told him that and we wanted to...
We've been around and around with this guy immediately.
I think the solicitor...
And we still want, and we still want these people money.
No, we haven't paid, as far as I'm concerned, we haven't paid him yet.
No, we haven't.
We haven't paid him and we're not going to pay him. And he agrees that we should pay him. He says the job is botched, he wants to make it right at no cost to the district. It would be 100% his cost to commit as soon as school's out, after graduation, take the floor down to the bear wood, redo the entire thing and if there's no cost to the district whatsoever, definitely redo it.
The only thing we're asked is the board to discuss and which one of these three options they want to do.
Is there any chance though, that there is long-term damage to this floor or permanent damage?
No.
It's just, it's just the finish that they put over the top of it. We think in the application process, the guy that was putting the product down, then there's a guy behind him, he's supposed to T-bar, spread it, the guy go way too far in front of it and the guy T-bar, couldn't keep up and it was dry before he could T-bar it. That's what we believe happened.
What about the yellow stuff?
It looks like someone let a hundred cats...
That's why we need yelling.
It's more useful?
Yeah, oh yeah.
If you are standing on the, if you're sitting in the bleachers, I don't think anybody would notice. When you're on the floor, if you're walking, if you're looking down, that's whenever you really notice where the yellow color, the yellow marking is. The floor is not damaged, it's just the finish.
Mr. Price, Mr. Price. Are we holding the money?
Yes.
Yes.
What the point is, suppose, suppose we agree to this and in a year's time, this guy says, that's why I asked you to get it. Okay, yeah, but we've been stuck with an inferior product on our floor for a year's time and then possibly, we're going to have to seek someone else to provide us remedy with this situation and this guy has no other further damages assessed to him, is that correct?
Well, you're going to get him invited to say that he's going to come back and redo it. And in the meantime, you're not going to pay him.
Yeah, but, but if he doesn't come back...
Then you have your money.
And... But we've lived with an inferior product.
Ultimately, ultimately it's going to cost you $25,000 to do the whole floor again.
Yes.
Dwayne, you've got students that use it.
Yes.
The whole time. If we shut it down, that affects all students all times until it's ready to be used again.
Right.
We can't go that direction.
No, not until next summer. I mean, we can't do anything now.
But we could have.
We could have, absolutely.
We could have, and we should have.
We tried to get the gentleman back out.
Tried to get him here, he won't come, what are you going to do?
And he would not. He said they are more concerned with why this happened, what caused it to yellow. And he said that they simply were going to get their chemists and if there were people that came from different parts of the country to look at the floor to give us an answer, it was all said and done. We had no answer, his answer to me personally was, it's a mystery, but we're going to make good on our product, we're going to make good on the floor. We, we don't want our reputation damaged, we want to make Albert Dallas School District happy. I said we would have been a lot more happy if we would have came back six weeks ago and redid the floor. But like I said, it wasn't without effort on Dwayne's and Mr. Hutchinson's and Mr. Cheslow, on my part. We all talked to this gentleman multiple times, he could talk, he was going to come back out.
Right, we could have. Mr. gentleman, going back to your part, I believe he was trying to depend on us at the beginning to say about the cleaning product.
And see...
So that, that was...
And I had to prove all...
That was a two or three week window saying it. That ended it. I think that was his initial response until we said, look, you provided us the service.
That's the reason for my concern if we wait a year, and I realize that we're under the gun, we don't have time. But if the gentleman had that as a motive to blame everybody else but himself...
Right, I see that.
Do we have any reason to believe, okay, that, well, I'm going to fix it next summer?
He could be out of business tomorrow.
Yeah.
So what do we do?
Well, we're just holding him, he doesn't pay. Let me tell you something, I'm off this floor been on, I'm up in the balcony looking down. I'll be honest with you, the normal people come watch basketball.
They're not going to see it.
Or not going to see it. They're really not going to see it unless somebody points it out to them.
Well, I don't know if Mr. Cheslow got to it, but that was his third option. So he was going to let it go for five years. He would redo it for $2,500. The bottom line is, he's trying to get his $25,000 back or out of it. We didn't, we wanted to bring it to you all and give you your three options. But we thought that if he hurried up in December and he's going to throw it down, his best way to do it in the summertime would be the first one on the list next summer, after graduation, take it down, back down to the wood. They got to put the decals on it, they got to come back in and do the refinish, they got to do all the labeling and everything else. That was our thought.
We need, we need to have a date that the product will be finished.
Right, and that's what we told him on the phone, that's exactly what I told him on the phone.
There's another option that's not supposed to go by them and it would be, it's owned and handled by a different company else. So it's not to pay them and have a different company come in if they're in a running toward now, so if the moment is pulled over, do you have a different company come in and do the right way?
Well, the only problem I have with that is we're going to have to pay that different company to come in and redo the floor.
But we haven't paid, we haven't paid this company.
Yeah, but redo the floor is $25,000, to re-code it's $4,500. $4,500, $25,000.
$35,000 job.
Is that not what...
That, that, that company did, took that down to the bear woods last year, did a beautiful job. They, they changed product and did not, apparently in my opinion, didn't apply it right and that's why we have this problem. They're willing to make do, the floor was absolutely gorgeous, they were about to buy it. Cody wanted this year, there's yellowing and stuff in each direction, they're, they're willing to correct it.
Well, I mean, it could be something, it could be solicitor, I mean, if they didn't, or they didn't cost us that much to fix it because of their error in their regulation.
Yeah, we have given them a chance to mitigate the damage.
See, I should sit there for a minute.
So we'll get that fixed. My question, what, what was the contract for, how much? To refinish the floor, was it $4,500, Bill, for what they did this summer?
$4,500 to re-code. All they do is a light sand and a re-coat of the top finish. Now, to refinish the floor completely, you're talking $25,000.
What they, what they, what they were to do this summer was the $4,500 re-coat. So, so we're holding $4,500.
Correct.
And we're hoping they'll come back next year and do a $25,000 job.
Correct.
At no cost to the district, that's what they proposed.
See, that's my point, you say, don't come back, so, we're $25,000, so we're off $25,000 because we're going to have to pay somebody else to come in and re-sand the floor.
How long ago did we have that whole floor re-sanded?
Well, I saw, I saw...
That's right, it hasn't been that long.
It's had two coats on it, one it's, one when they did it and one in...
Because that's when we came, I was going to say we paid $22,000.
And they came back out at Thanksgiving and re-coated.
Correct.
That hasn't even been, that hasn't even been two years.
No, but in the original agreement when he did it, that he was going to put the first coat on it and come back, buff it, do a little bit, take a little bit off, put the second coat on. When he came back to do the second coat, now we find the yellow marking.
Now, this is the third cut.
Yeah.
This is the third cut.
I think we went down to the third one.
Were we, were we in agreement to wait till next summer, have it redone at their cost? No cost to the district?
And we, and we, if it's going to cost us $25,000... And we, didn't we, if it's gonna cost us $25,000, and he backs out, did the district go after him? What is the solution?
What's that again?
Regardless of what...
The solution is to get the floor done right.
No, 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 that isn't my question. Is it him redoing a 4,400 job?
No.
No.
He's doing the $25,000 job.
Down to the bare wood like he did last summer.
I understand, but is that the only solution, is to stand it down or is he doing something for us?
The only solution to get the yellow marks out was to sand it down to the bare, to the bare floor.
And he's gonna do that $25,000 job for 4,500.
He's gonna do it for nothing.
No, he's gonna do it for nothing.
He's not charging us the 4,500 cost this year because he bought it. And he told us that he would redo it next summer or as soon as school was out, at no cost to the district.
He's right.
We have to get back to him before we're gonna...
We can get that in writing from him. Once the board decides which option they wanna go with, votes on it, then we can call him up and tell him, "This is what the board decided." He asked us to bring these options to the board so they can say which option they want. The only true option we can go with is one, B, is wait till next summer and sand it down completely.
I'll be more than happy if you guys come up with another option. I'll take my back to them.
Okay. I don't, I don't... You can't be shooting each other here, okay? The idea is to work for a solution that's good for everybody, but the point is, if he doesn't come back... Actually, where's this gentleman's business?
Swinkly.
Swinkly.
So they're here most of the time, so they...
He does a lot of work for a lot of schools.
A lot of colleges did.
Maybe we could look into the idea of him posting a bond that he'll be back. If he does public projects, he's probably done some that have put him in a situation where he's required to be bonded. You see what I'm saying?
I'm sure he had that for sure.
Well, I think guys for the score that say, "Fine, come back." But we need to be bonded for the 25,000 dollars for the floor guaranteed.
Okay, so I'm letting you ask you to leave the bond. What happens if we do, take that on? Then you sue if he doesn't do the bond. Then you sue.
If we go with that option, the next summer once school's out, as long as he agrees, we move on. Okay, if we move on. Mr. Cheslow, continue with maintenance, please.
All right. Electrical project at the high school, as Mr. Peg stated earlier. I went ahead and I called six contractors. Five of them came out. I took them to all the schools, showed them exactly what we wanted, gave them all the same instructions and what we wanted in writing. The lowest bid came in but didn't have their clearances. And me and Mr. Peg talked about it. The second lowest did, has done work for the school already, has all the clearances in place, which would be Miller Electrical. They are willing to start this week. Hopefully, two days they can get that done. The valves are to be installed at South on the 16th, as I said earlier.
Bill, back to the electrical part. Did you already saw the following materials?
All materials, all, yes, sir. All materials, all supplies, all labor, everything's done. With receptacles in the ceiling, five at the high school, one above. Everyone, to it north, to it south.
How much was it, Bill?
2280 for the high school and like 94, or 945 for each roughly for north and south. So it was well under the day, probably like $7,000.
Mr. Cheslow, would you be wired into the generator? I mean, would this be able to be used on emergency power?
The specifications that I was told and was given and where the electrical panels I was told to tie into are not on emergency power, ma'am.
So, did nobody come in this school?
We have no...
You have no... Then they're already in there. The kids are already in there moving the floor.
There was a, on your name, it's, I was wondering, skipped over, you're going over about the dirt and sewage project.
The what, ma'am?
The dirt and the sewage project. What's that about?
I still can't hear.
There was a...
Fee on your birthday, Bill, the contractor doing the sewage project is wanting to use some of the clean dirt left over.
Oh, I skipped there. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, ma'am, I did skip over that with all that. Yes, the contractor that's doing the sewage line project around here has a lot of good dirt and a lot of good topsoil. We have a lot of low-lying areas and everything in stock that's wet all the time. The main one is like over in the corner, sleepy hall where cars get stuck and everything. Different places on the school grounds. We need some up behind the one concession stand around the flagpole. The contractor is willing to give us this dirt.
So you're talking about dirt not from our property, but from other people's property?
Mainly it's gonna be from our properties, ma'am. It's gonna be mainly from all...
Because it's kind of alarming, and maybe somebody with more construction experience, it... My understanding is that they're doing this excavating property and property and removing dirt. They should be putting that same amount of dirt back into...
There's no way, ma'am. You're taking the dirt out, you're putting gravel bed in, you're putting pipe in, you're putting gravel, and you're putting manholes in. You have extra dirt.
And there's a lot of extra dirt.
There's a lot of extra dirt that's piled on our property and the rideaways that they're wanting us to use.
And they're, so you don't know definitively whether it's dirt from our property or...
Ma'am, it is piled.
If it's from other property owners, then we have the right to it. They have the right to it.
Ma'am, it is off of our rideaways, piled on our rideaways, off of our school property. They're not bringing it from Collier or your place or anything like that. There are piles of dirt all around our school building that are our dirt from our property. They hauled half of it out.
They haul half of our dirt out?
Probably, yes.
And that doesn't rise...
That is in the specifications for them to get rid of it. They're willing to give us dirt if we want it.
It takes another nature a thousand years to make the empty topsoil. It's worth $60.
They are not hauling any topsoil whatsoever out. This is filled dirt only. Then we hit an area up here where the filled dirt is beautiful as topsoil, and that's what they piled down here in the corner on our property. It came off our property, they piled it on our property. That is what they're willing to give us. If the school board is willing to vote, say, "Yes, we'll take the dirt."
I know that parking lot behind the football field always gets wet.
Are they gonna put it in those low areas and their cost?
They're gonna put it in some of the low areas. My guys are gonna take it and put it in some of the low areas and everything and stuff. They just don't want us doing it without the school board approval. It is dirt that came off of our property. We're not going anywhere else and getting it. It's already piled. If you drive around, if you drive around in the block, there's topsoil piles and there's filled dirt piles, and that's what we're talking about, the filled dirt piles.
Well, if we move it, it costs us money. They do it, they do the dirt.
Yeah, they're gonna move some of it. They're not gonna move all of it, of course.
So, we wanna allow, this is the sewage company that's doing the project...
Yes, sir.
...to use the dirt that was taken out of the ground from our, on our property to fill in low-lying areas along Sleepy Hollow? You talked about where it's parked off, where the lawnmower gets stuck, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Places like that to try to use some of the dirt and also fill in some low-lying areas.
Correct.
So are we, are we in agreement to allow them to do that, to spread that dirt?
But it's their legal duty. They can't just come in and put this on and end up leaving out the dirt. I mean, it's their duty to probably escalate that dirt.
They'll take that dirt and fill it in somebody's hole somewhere. They've got dumping areas and everything and stuff. As they're digging that rideaway, they own that rideaway. They're taking the dirt out, they're piling it up, and what's in excess, they're hauling out.
They have no...
He can use that dirt for our own purposes.
Yeah, they're taking it.
I got a thought. In the back where they have that student parking lot where we run that homecoming parade every year, and when it rains, they tear all that up. Why don't we level it out and put gravel up wherever we got road? We don't have the problem with homecoming then. No one would be tearing up the grass. That's a thought. It's already, I'm serious, it's already torn up down there. If you made that double gate open and made a road into the grass, we wouldn't have it. Unless we're gonna do a wet for the homecoming parade, no one told me. However, I think that then that would put a road in there from that part to that part. You wouldn't tear up the grass, and you have it for homecoming. That's my opinion.
I know we keep the dirt.
But I think in order to...
And spread it off low lying areas.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay. First of all, if I correct, the contractor is required to remove excess dirt.
He owns the rideaway, sir.
Forget about who owns the rideaway. He's required to get rid of the excess dirt. Is that...
Correct.
Okay. He suggested, instead of him taking it somewhere and just dumping it at site, where you want, it would be cheaper for him, I guess, to stay local. And it would be many benefited to us to have him spreading around our property.
Correct.
Is that what you're going to do again?
Yes, sir. He offered it to us, instead of him hauling it offsite if we wanted to fill in some low areas, but he wanted school board approval before he did it.
I, I... That's what's bothering me. No, that doesn't, my concern is should be opposite. I don't wanna see our filter being excavated somewhere else. I'm not driving to that particular part of the contract for some time, but I don't think they have that right to take our filters and just into the movement. I think that there's obligations for it to be excavated. I mean, I don't think that they have a legal right to take any of our topsoil or our filter and take it anywhere else but on our property.
They're not taking the topsoil anywhere.
They want to keep it on our property. Right, and I support that. I'm concerned that while we're talking about the issues, is are they also... So they're saying, are they trucking it somewhere else?
They're trucking the fill. They're trucking the fill, not the topsoil.
You know personally, you're saying right now that they're trucking it out here.
That's the only thing I've seen them truck. There's piles, if you go walk the property right now, you will see numerous piles of topsoil. They take the topsoil off with a front-end loader and pile it up, and then they excavate, and as they excavate, they get extra piles of filled dirt because they're putting pipe, gravel, manholes in. They're trucking that off because they can't leave piles of dirt on our property.
We need to look into that.
So they're putting the topsoil back into the...
The topsoil, all the topsoil would be put back, yes.
We need to look into whether they have a legal right, because if there's places that we need this fill, you know, people pay for filter. They pay more topsoil, they pay for filter. If we have these places that we know need to be filled in, we shouldn't be permitting them to take it and sell it or do whatever.
That's what they're asking the board for permission to do.
Well, in terms of permission to take it somewhere else, no. And permission to spread here, I think they're gonna be doing again.
Bill, is there a place that we have, or whatever dirt they don't spread on our property in low-lying areas, whether it be filled or topsoil, is there a place we have on our property if they can dump all the dirt that's already out? That we can dump the dirt and have extra fill there?
I mean, we could dump right along the fill, or the fill line over here where they dumped the other, right on top of the sewer line and stuff. I mean...
Because our property runs through back to that creek, right?
Correct.
So if they wanted to set a hauling out...
Now, they're already up in sleepy hall and turning and coming up through what behind the soccer field.
So if it's off our property, spread the topsoil up and fill in low-lying areas to dress it up to help us correct the problem? If it's dirt, that they're not gonna use the fill anywhere or topsoil, have it dumped on our property so we have filled dirt if we need to use it at other sites throughout the district? Does that sound like an agreeable solution to them?
Yes.
Okay.
That's just so we make sure we put some answers...
The board will have to put that in some type, will have to put that in some type of directive to them.
Yeah, we are. We have to remember that. I don't wanna pay someone that's not the legal way.
When we signed off on rideaway and paperwork, which I never seen and had no privy of, I don't know what was in there. It may have been stated in there that you have no legal right to. I don't know. I never seen the paperwork.
They gotta restore your rideaway.
They are gonna restore the rideaway, sir.
They can't just legal pile of dirt there and say it's ours.
Right, and they'll truck it out, and they have areas to get rid of it if we don't want it. They asked the board for permission to go ahead and pile it here or use it in low-lying areas.
Is there logically any place in the district that is in the need of not topsoil, but filled dirt?
Yes, south. South could use a lot down there right off the bat. I know that for a fact. But they're not gonna truck it down there for us for nothing, too.
We have to break on that. It's like the topsoil.
Hey, they gotta get rid of it. They can't legal pile of dirt on the rideaway.
Give them a site to build. We prepare a site so they can dump it on our property to somewhere where there's a low-lying area or something.
Let's move on. Bill, continue with maintenance.
I'm getting H&amp;H water controls who we've used for all of our testing and everything. We need to start doing lead testing for our schools. To get the first one done, I'm gonna have midnight shift, pull the samples. The water has to stay in the pipe for 20, be still in the pipe for 24 hours, pull the samples, and then with under 24 hours, they have to be taken to the testing lab. So they're local, so I'm gonna go with them, and then I'm gonna look for other resources to see if I can find anything cheaper. But getting them to them within that 24-hour period is gonna be hard to do. And we had the walkthrough of the dungeon this week, late this week. Everything is done down there. I'm gonna have the guys go down and completely clean it up. We're gonna change the cords and turn that area over to Mr. Hutchinson, and he can deal with it as he pleases. Any questions for me?
Yes, Mr. Cheslow, did you have that, did you have that material tested for asbestos at, where'd you build it?
The company that did that job had their contractor look at the materials, and he said it was not asbestos. He also looked at the date of the manufacture of the unit, which is through the state off of the serial number, which was 1995. The unit was manufactured. At that point in time, no asbestos material was ever used in the manufacturing of any equipment.
But could this have been something that was meant to go to a previous...
No, ma'am. It goes off of the serial number of date of manufacture. The serial number when it was made stated that it was manufactured in 1995. If it was made in '79 and set around till '95, the serial number would've stated through the state that it was manufactured in '75. I have the state record right here. It's 1995.
I see. But you had it surveyed. You did not have it tested?
I had not, means and methods of the contractors up to him. He removed the boiler, took it outside. One of his gentlemen, who you don't know what he was talking about, said there could possibly be asbestos. Everybody threw their arms up. I went down, looked at the year of manufacture, told them to clean it up and get it out there, do what they had to. Lee's Plumbing already looked at the unit before they'd done the job, knew when the boiler was manufactured, knew it did not contain asbestos. Then afterwards, the asbestos contractor that works for Lee's Plumbing examined it, examined the dates. He said it could not be, and he gave us a letter stating such. The letter was given to the principal of the school and all three custodians at the school. Previous, before my time, a boiler was removed out of there. It was built in 1962, which did contain asbestos, and no one said a word about it.
I wasn't hearing that.
I wasn't either, but this boiler was not containing asbestos material.
Okay, so they surveyed. They didn't test it?
They did not test.
Were you asked to have it tested?
No, I did not have to ask and have it tested.
You were not asked to have it tested?
I did not ask to have it tested, ma'am. With the boiler being manufactured in 1995, with the certification I had and the test that the schooling I've had tells me that that boiler did not have asbestos in it. If it was manufactured before 1979, it would contain asbestos.
Did Mr. Hutchinson ask you to test it just for the employees?
I went down to look for pieces of it after they cleaned it up, and there was no pieces. I was given a piece of material that said that was it, which was a piece of mortar out of a brick, out of the wall. The fibers that were in that piece were sawed by them. That was hard as a rock. That was not piece of it. They cleaned it up, took it, and took it to their shop. Their asbestos person examined it and said it was not asbestos and gave the school a letter. The letter I gave to the principal and the three custodians at the school.
When I meet Merkin, someone comes in with a nasty mole on their face. Yeah, that's my mole. I just find this hard to believe.
Ma'am, dates and manufacturing and when stuff was put in, this 12-by-12 pile doesn't contain asbestos. Anything that's eight-by-eight, yes, was suspicious. If it's suspicious, you have to test it.
But the contractor came in specifically and told the staff and told the principal that they were concerned that it was asbestos. The principal calls Mr. Hutchinson, who calls you. You go out to the building. You bring the custodians...
The principal calls Mr. Hutchinson, who calls you. You go out to the building. You berate the custodians calling you.
I did what, ma'am?
And then you were asking how to test it.
Wait, 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 excuse me. What did you say I did, ma'am?
You berated this custo?
I did not. I do never berate any of my employees for no reason whatsoever. I walked in, I didn't even talk to them at first. I went and looked at the product. I got the tag off of the boiler. I made sure the serial number matched, so it was manufactured in 1995. I told them to clean it up, and if they don't know what they're talking about from Lee's Plumbing, then please keep their mouth shut. I can say that.
And who did you tell? The employees or Lee's Plumbing?
Lee's Plumbing, I told them to shut up. If they don't know what they're talking about, they don't need to say it's asbestos. Can you look at something and see if it's asbestos? No.
No, I cannot. That's why I rely on a contractor, somebody that has expertise.
And from the date of manufacture and from Lee's Plumbers, Lee's Plumbing's asbestos contractor, who does their abatement, gave us a letter stating it is not asbestos.
A, a few months ago, there was, um, almost on an emergency basis that you had to be certified in asbestos for this schooling. There's some emails exchanged. At that time, I sent some emails to you about D E P regulations that require, not only that we have somebody in district that has that certification, but also that there be yearly annual training sessions and so forth. Where have you moved? And I acquired shortly thereafter, and we haven't moved, so where are we at this point?
Yes, ma'am, I have moved since that date forward. I've been contacting people, trying to get them out here to do the work. Only one, the only one.
Please, I'm, I'm talking about according to the D E P regulations, that the district is supposed to be doing training sessions for certain workers to be able to spot suspicious, uh, things that may be asbestos and to treat them not as well, importantly. Have we, have you, have you thought about that training? Have we scheduled that training? Do we know?
Ma'am, I first need to know which buildings and where the asbestos is. I need to know that myself. I don't have, if the previous administrator would have been doing his job, there'd been a stack of paperwork five foot tall.
Let, let me interject if I may. The paper that Bill handed out, he has been in contact with a few companies that do the free year asbestos testing. That's where they will go around to all of our buildings, and you make evaluations to determine if and where there may be asbestos in our buildings. His company, AGX, out of, uh, Rexburg, PA, is the only company that he was able to get in touch with. And I believe they are going to be starting that process. Do you have a timeline built whenever this?
No, I have to have board approval on it, and then they'll start on it and get moving. I cannot tell.
But all of the other companies that, that we had solicited, no longer do it. Ones out of business will worry about it.
I cannot tell a person that this building contains asbestos and where to look for it and what to do until I know it's there.
I'm not talking about the building, I'm talking about training and D E P regulations.
I can't train anybody until I know where it's at. I gotta know.
That's not true at all. That's not true at all. You can certainly train your maintenance workers and your custodians to spot suspicious, suspicious things and what protocol, what action they can take based on what they see. There was more than D E P regulations than that.
The problem is, is everything's asbestos until it's tested. Once we get that out of the way, then we can notify that, yes, we'll do the testing.
That completely contradicts what you just said about you knew that it wasn't asbestos. So now you're saying that everything's asbestos until it's, until it's tested. That's a complete contradiction.
But the year of manufacture and the letter from Lee's Asbestos Abatement Department counterdicts everything there.
Hey, we're going to move on. Bill, please keep me up to date whenever we have more information. Are you asking the board permission to move forward? AGX, it has the three year study completed, and we have to have that.
Yes, I am.
Is that on the agenda? That's on the agenda today?
I will put that on the agenda.
So that will be a voting item Wednesday night to, uh, do the three year asbestos study that we're requiring due to identify any buildings in our district that may contain asbestos, um, and go from there.
And this is a pretty large expense. Who else did you try to contact to get it, to get it rid of?
Moles Engineering was one. Uh, the other company that we tried to use before in the past here is now no longer in business. Moles is down to two people. They used to be a company of 50, they're down to two. And that's the only three that are in the area unless I go into other states and travel time and stop. I mean, I can do a nationwide state search if I need to.
What was the name of the third company?
I can't remember off the top of my head, ma'am.
How recently did you try to contact them?
It's, I've been trying to contact them since this started two months ago, maybe, three months ago.
And when did you reach out to Moles Engineering?
Same time.
And what was their response?
They're getting back to me. They're getting back to me.
I have a question. The cost is 11,500, and it shows additional rate schedules. I think we need to put a cap on this, so again, it seems a certain price.
You put a cap on it, you're not going to get the job completely done. You have to do the job completely for the D E P. If you put a cap on it and they stop and you don't have it all done, then it's not compliant with the here.
But, and this has the old E O Wilson on it, so we really don't need to?
No, we don't really need to do that. I found out through, uh, Adelphi that they have been doing that billing themselves. They are going to give me the paperwork so we can have that for our auction for disclosure of where asbestos is in that building. Uh, they've been doing the studies, I guess, ever since they've been in there. Um, he told me, but I can't remember right off the bat. Yeah.
Is that something because we're auction, auction ahead, Mr. Lee, that you, I mean, I, do you apply and provide that with me?
Well, first of all, the three year studies are something that are, you don't have any three years. I suspect why there are so many companies no longer doing it is that, you know, you do a three year study, you come back. Either it's already been abated, so you just update the three year studies and pay enough money to buy it out. But if Adelphi has somebody, maybe we're checking them out. Now, as far as?
And I just found that out this past week, that there's another company out there that Adelphi uses that I didn't know about.
As far as A O, A O Wilson, if you're selling property, generally you would make available to them your, um, asbestos report that we've done every three years. So they do remind our old ones, but if Adelphi was intended as, we have the most common, we showed you, that's the body.
Mr. Price, if we're going to enter into a contract with AGX without knowing what the final figure is, is there nothing that we can do to, like, you know, there's 11,500, you know, costs that we know, but we have no idea how much more?
Did you check out the back?
Well, that's what I'm looking at. Yeah, we have no idea. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is, this has to be done, and I understand that. But I also understand that, okay, uh, I don't want this to be a big and hope or turn out to be three or four times the 11,000 dollars, because isn't there any way that we can get?
I, I'm just seeing, just seeing this for the first time, just suspect. Yeah, they are saying it's going to be, I think they're saying it's going to be out of it. Plus, they still have a baseline rate schedule. I guess some of it has to be, whether they even have to have a test. They, they can visually see something asbestos, they listen and say that's what it is.
But then we'll be, am I reading this correct, that, uh, they'll conduct a three year, free inspection, uh, and prepare report for 11,500 dollars? Okay, but that's not the total thing?
Well, it says though, provide the above reference services based upon the attached basic rate schedule. I don't know what that, I don't know.
Yeah, I know it's on the map, but what does that mean? Yeah, okay.
Well, and, and so to call upon our Mr. Price comments, then, in addition to Moles Engineering, AGX, the company that you reached out to that you couldn't remember, there is in fact a fourth company that did it, Adelphi's?
Yes, and I just found this out this week.
Okay, and can you reach out to them and see if they?
Yes, I can. We may wait another three months by the time they get us a proposal. I can do that. I can't force these contractors to do anything they don't want to do or make them work any faster than they are. I try, just like the Jim floor. I beat that guy up, you know, he, he, he's moving as fast as he can. These companies, they do what they want to do. We owe them, they owe us nothing.
Could you get a chance in the next day or two, can you email me the other company names that you can't recall?
One company name I can't recall. Moles I remember, AGX, the other company. You mean the one from Adelphi?
Both, the one from Adelphi and then the one that you said you reached out to a couple months ago.
Well, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Lee, one, one more question. Have you run into this in any of your other, uh?
That should have been done.
I can't remember. Because these three year testings come up, I suspect most districts, it's whoever did the last one, they come back. And they, the generous of yours, well, they know where they left off. But you see, all you're doing with these reports is saying where there is asbestos. And just because there's asbestos doesn't mean you have to do anything to be encapsulated. But they do keep a write account, and then they'll come back three years later and say, well, there's no more asbestos there in the building.
And every six, sorry, every six months I have to inspect it.
You know, we, I'm concerned about the, the final.
Yeah, I don't know what they need there. I know some of the, they say down below that they're going to be doing the whole standard. Well, here's another option.
I tend to find out.
Because we need to find out.
Sure.
You need to find out what it is they're charging. Is it 11,000? Is lost the cost of some of the tests, or what is it?
Did I miss it? Did you get orders once?
I have no.
You cannot find any documentation anywhere. I've looked all through the offices, I've visited the schools, and honestly, every three years, there's a study done, and every six months, the previous maintenance supervisor, excuse me. Every three, every six months, the previous supervisor has to do a walkthrough and check it also. So he's been doing this since 1979, there should be a stack of paperwork five foot tall.
How many years have you been there, Mr. Cheslow?
Five years.
You haven't done a study?
I never knew of a study having to be done here. Also, uh, the previous to me, there was no stage rig inspection, no light pole inspections. I'm trying to bring this place up to code and do everything as I find out it's not been done.
This is supposed to be done after three years, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've been here five, and it hasn't been done in at least five years.
It hasn't been done since the previous guy, forever.
We're, we're sure that it hasn't been done for five years?
No, I'm sure, because my first years here, no one ever said anything to me about doing it. There was no records in the office of it being done. There was no records of any inspections being done that I could follow.
Was it, you wasn't aware?
I was not aware of any of this. Uh, as I keep going here, I find out there was no light pole inspection, no stage rig inspections, a lot of different types of inspections that I've started doing that hasn't even been done in the past.
Well, let's move on with this. What, what about this off? Since other schools have to do this too, can we contact some other school districts and see what they need?
I could do that. I could try that.
Well, all the schools got to be advised with this. Well, hell, they got to have some of these. Any, any other questions for Mr. Cheslow in maintenance? Okay, and we move on. Mr. DuPont Athletics, could you hear us on the turf, please?
Yeah, it's, uh, coming along. Uh, obviously, it's a little bit slower than we anticipated. They expect to be done, uh, hopefully next Thursday or Friday. Be time for first scrimmage against Wayneford next Saturday. They are moving. Uh, they had a really good week last week, quite, quite a bit done. Did have some rain, they did work in the rain, it put over 70 hours in the last week. We still have a little bit of time to go, uh, just hoping to be able to meet the deadline this week. Summer camp starts, uh, next Monday. We'll have to arrange this to, uh, for the soccer and football teams to involve them in the studio.
Wayne, I know that you have nothing, nothing to do with how many employees they put out there. I've been down on two different occasions, both times there were two gentlemen out working. And it wasn't, it wasn't back to back days, you know, it was spread over, I don't know, uh, eight, 10 days. And there were just the same two guys.
Right, and I, uh, I addressed that with the, uh, project manager. I did send him my email, or not send my email. Said even we weren't happy with that. Uh, that was about two weeks ago. Last week, they really, they had a full six man crew here, and you got all the, mostly all of the turf done. The only part that's really not completed yet is the, uh, the turf right around the floorboard and a little bit on the sidelines. But they are, they assured me that they should be ready by next Thursday, next Thursday or Friday.
So, but get back to the field, back to Bill. Mr. Hutchinson, I think I have a lot to do with this. Didn't that, we run a pond in the underneath there?
Yeah, we, we, when we look to, uh, speed and build the way that Chris, uh, we can't get, there's nothing on the field. There was no manhole, nothing to drop down, uh, so we're just going to have to look, doing the old school way, and hopefully just pull it through other ponds.
We didn't find both ends?
Yeah. So hopefully. There was nothing on the field, beach wall, store.
All right. Do you have any other questions, Wayne?
Do we, are they, do we have a, do they go on that for when, can they're supposed to have a dime?
I, I talked to the, uh, the manager last Friday before I left work, and I told him where our deadline was. And so obviously, we're not going to meet the deadline, but I told him we have screenings the following Saturday, and he said they would, they would be ready by then. You know, contractors only, you should hire, we've never done.
Hey, uh, any questions for Mr. DuPont? One more, hey, Wayne, how many helmets we had to set up this year?
What, pardon me? How many helmets have you replaced or? I think we lost like seven or eight, something around there. Hey, you have to replace them like after 10 years.
How's the turnout for the football game?
I want to say we have about 40 kids out right around here. We have a small senior class, and we knew that going in. I think last year, Junior Junior's going to head seven or eight, so hopefully the numbers are going to be pretty safe.
Yeah, Coach DuPont, did you want to mention something about the cross country track?
Oh, yeah.
We only have one home meet, and what Coach, um?
Yeah, obviously with the, uh, the, I mean, our cross country course is not going to be ready to host a meeting. Uh, therefore, Coach Joe looking to, uh, utilize Penn State Fayette, and so we're just going to go through the proper channels and see if we can't utilize that for our, uh, home meet.
There's no cost in the district for having that, our home meet at Penn State Fayette, other than?
We need to have insurance.
Basically, a short liability insurance?
Yeah.
Is that something we already have, Denise? We already have liability insurance, we'd be covered at the Penn State site and use that as a home meet?
Yeah, I'll just use it.
Thanks. And certain, certain numbers off the, across country?
Or, no, the same. Nah, they're, they're not, they're not breaking right now. You're maybe five?
Not good either.
Financial, Denise?
I probably don't have anything to discuss. My only thing I want to bring to your attention is under financial, D E P. Um, since we're going to have about six weeks until our next meeting, um, any states to pay utilities, have them, and those who are coming, you obviously, or, or most states, we turn a bit in, um, better than we have, or, or, um, we're trying to make, um, that we're taking you, um, just paying, I have something to do to keep you through that, if it's not like giving me purchase or, or, to, to, but.
Um, in terms of financial, how much do you want us to?
Um, Denise, how much do you want us to possibly, um, sell for, so we can... I personally, as a woman, I think we, I'm a caution giving, I almost gave her dollars to not have to do it. Just, we can be...
Mr. Not only Mr., would he be utilized, um, with the drone department at all, or any other departments, the microphone and the equipment?
Because your meetings are being held here, it's very difficult for us to be able to access them and tear down and set up, so this setup was, when I was approached about pricing out a setup, I went the cheapest route possible, using what we had and what we didn't have, and that's why we went the way we did. If you'd like to let the other departments use it, that's great, but you also don't know what's gonna happen with wear and tear, you don't know if you're gonna get everything back, you don't know the quality of, because we've done that in the past with what I have of my program over at the high school. We get, we lend stuff out, we don't get it back at stem.
Well, I don't want to let anything out.
No, but I'm just...
I don't think they should have been bought.
But we need...
I don't even know, we have to go to this board talking about it.
But ma'am, we needed them because we can't hear you on the video, and I noticed some of you have turned the microphones away, so you can't be heard, and some have been moved, and the thing is, if you want this for the public to see, they need to be able to hear you, and if they can't hear you, there's no use for us to do this, and we've gotten positive feedback on what has been online. I mean, I'm a communication, I, I am a communication specialist, this is what I do, this is what I did twenty years before I worked for the district, I've been in the district now for twenty years. If you want to get your message out, you have to control your message, you're controlling it by doing this. It's not hearsay, it's not anything, you're giving the message, but the thing is, if you're gonna resist it, then there's no point in doing it.
I do understand that.
Well, I just think we should have been...
We should have the video.
What's the, I mean, how long will it last, twenty years?
They'll last, they'll last as long as they're taken care of, I mean, I have microphones now that I purchased in two thousand, two thousand and one, and I'm still using them.
But that is the point, as a board, we were not informed that anything was being bought, and as a board, we should be informed about everything.
You know what, there, I know that if, we're sitting in the back of this room, I mean, you can't hear what we're saying, there were numerous complaints from the videos, that they couldn't hear what they were saying.
Okay, can we just please move on, I don't want to make this a twenty-minute discussion, let's just go.
You would think on a board, that for training families reasons, we want the couple out to be part of the conversation and to hear.
We never ever tried to hide it.
I committed it.
It's, it's, it's good and great, don't get me wrong, but we did raise taxes, we're trying to cut the corners, watch where money's spent, I just thought we should have had a say-so on it.
Maybe we could call our meetings in the R board, so they could use the mic for them.
No?
Would that work?
All right, let's move on.
Yeah, so I don't want to take a half hour discussion.
Okay, Denise, anything else under financial? Board, are we okay with Denise's question under financial? D three, okay, thank you. Um, moving down in order, food service, Mr. Bowden?
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Um, just been busy this past month, we're looking ready for the opening of school, we did start meeting some of the football players today, uh, Wednesday and Friday, so, uh, we got some stat numbers of the high school working now. Um, been working with a local group, uh, Republic Food Enterprise, and, uh, trying to get some local crews to utilize in our school. The program seems to be moving ahead, uh, as I get more information, I'll definitely share that with you. Um, we had two agenda items, um, the first was raising the adult prices, it's in three seventy-five, sorry, Mr. Bowden, uh, for adult lunches, and a dollar eighty-five for adult breakfast, that's in, uh, within regulations, and that was still one program. As Ray works, it's increasing, we have to watch those prices as well. And then the second agenda item, I request that we create a two-hour position at Smithfield Elementary, and that is due to the precipitation, and what I use is a mill's per labor hour to calculate that, and I see an eagle that, um, I do have some other areas that I'm looking at, and what I'm trying to do is spread the laboring we have, set up the district where it's, as a home, to be used to up and down five minutes. You have any questions?
Troy, you said that was on the agenda, to create that position, you were asking the board to consider that for...
It is on the agenda under eight.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Mr. Bowden? Technology, Mr. Bowden?
Well, good evening, everyone, um, we are rooting all for Sapphire communication, uh, we're coming down to the last couple weeks before school starts, uh, everything's been going well so far, um, trainings have been happening, uh, everybody's been partaking, um, getting down to, uh, you know, as I mentioned, getting down to the ditty gritty with the start of school, so we're getting everything ready for that, uh, lab bookups, computer bookups, uh, Chromebooks for the eighth and ninth graders coming up. Um, on the agenda is an item to hire a technology integrator, we did have, uh, interviews today, so I believe there's a need to speak in executive session on that. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Chris, what do you guys think of Chromebooks for the, uh, North and South?
We're looking at, right now, we're looking at the twenty-fifth or the twenty-third.
I think we, we had a couple discussions of maybe doing it just on the twenty-third, uh, and have, have the North and South come to the high school, rather than try to get out there, try to get, to see where we have, like, kind of a home base, uh, so I, I just talked to Zach, I think it's gonna be the twenty-third, which is a clerical, their clerical day, uh, just open it up and say, come on out. We'd like to get them to pitch work prior to, uh, however, uh, that's what we're looking at, or at least that week, Mr. Murray.
That's good, thanks. Once, once we have the date hammered down, we'll start, you know, advertising that aggressively, but I did instruct my guys to have the Chromebooks ready for the twentieth and eighth day, so...
Mr. Bowden, uh, where are we with the elementary computer labs, cameras and stuff to be discussed, is that all gonna be in place for your local school year for all elementarys?
Yes, sir, the, uh, computers have been delivered, um, I believe last week in the beginning, uh, actually, I think he was finishing for today, um, but that was being taken care of, and then myself and Justin will be that, uh, doing camera installs tomorrow and Wednesday, wrapping up on Thursday.
Any further questions for Mr. Bowden? See, Special Ed, uh, Mrs. Britch is not with us, Mr. Donovan?
Uh, we've been meeting central office administrators, uh, putting final preparations in place toward the upcoming August in service days, and we've pretty much got a plan laid out for those days. Uh, Mrs. Britch and I are still continuing to make the final contacts for last year's graduating seniors to finish up the, um, post-wat come surveys, I think I mentioned that this is our cohort year for that, and we're finding some really interesting things that our graduates from last year are doing now, some things that are just surpriseless in a positive way, I think. So, we, there's a deadline for the middle of September, and we're gonna come in well and well while for that, and also found out last week that this will be, this upcoming year, nineteen, will be our year for our Indicator thirteen monitoring, which is a year ahead of schedule, they typically run in cohort years as well, like, every six years, different state, it's kind of, they've, um, changed up the cohort, so everybody's kind of getting pushed ahead, a year, um, many of the county schools are following in this year's cohort, so Indicator thirteen deals with transition services that we are providing to students who are eighteen and up, so it's like a mini, mini compliance monitoring training, you've done them many times in the past, and that will entail a lot of, um, site-based trainings, and, um, they'll be looking at our IEPs for students who are ages fourteen and up, so, didn't quite see that one coming, because it was supposed to be in the, um, the next year, but it is what it is, we've done it before, we'll do it again. Um, uh, so, again, to sum that up last week, um, you might have noticed in your packet that was sent home, there was a copy of a contract that, um, was presented to us, we were contracted, Mr. Hutchinson, Mrs. Britch, and myself, that was the representative of a local company who's interested in providing us some services as one-on-one, two-on-one aides for students, um, we were interested in maybe partnering up and having you go on them as an additional provider, because we typically use ID one as one-on-ones, two-on-ones, we use a company called Intro, and even with those two companies providing services for our students, there are times when they don't have enough personnel to cover this need, so it would be, um, I think, in our interest to consider another service, um, there are delays, if you are the owners of the company or here, if you had any questions for them, but there were some things that, you know, we were gonna bring up in executive sessions, uh, to, um, address that had come up, um, one of the owners that worked for us in a different capacity, um, in front of our building, so, uh, again, if you had any questions for them, if you happen to be here right now, um, but I think there was a lot of information that was covered in the basic contract that was sent, um, so we can add that onto the agenda.
Yeah, since, since they're here, I would suggest, you know, um, if I misstated, let me know, this is not, the owner of the company, Family Times, is not an employee of Albert Gallus. We bring up, we think some people may think that she is, she is not, she's actually an employee of the intermediate unit who is assigned to Senator Albert Gallus in Phillips, correct? Correct. For, for...
Yeah, she's a subcontractor to the IU.
Okay, so, we don't know whether anybody has a problem with her providing this additional service, we just want to alert you, because it seems like people seek someone and they assume that they're an employee of the district.
There's, there's a technical requirement that is, right?
No, I don't see it, but we want to bring it to your attention.
I have a question about it, one, how, under service terms, there's a, an ID plus, is this common in this industry?
Um, I see it in, well, I would say it's uncommon. Here's what they're attempting to do, they don't want to hire away their employees.
Well, if you can offer them to have a wage, uh, you know, if they have marketing skill, I think it's clear.
I would say that if another company, another company that we use, does that as well, that there's a, that there's a timeframe, it's a twelve-month, in one year, so I'd say summer for marketing, three years for...
You hire the skilled person, the longer the time.
Mrs. Dunn, how much, you said that now we use the IU, uh, on occasions to provide these same services, what's the hourly rate that we pay the IU?
They charge us, their employees are salaried, so it's not an hourly rate.
Do you have an hourly rate?
Uh, I want to get that from them, um, they would have to break it down by the hour, because they, they work as, they're number of contractual days. But that, that...
No, I just wondered, you know, how the twenty-two dollars an hour was arrived at? Was it, uh, in competition with the IU, or was it, uh, what we presently pay the IU and the other agency that you talked about, uh, was it a negotiation?
It is comparable to the other agencies that we use, um, when the IU cannot fill these types of things, so... And, and it, it's, it's, is it a current statement that we have all three students with IEPs, they're supposed to have these days, and the IU has not been able to furnish them up to make those days, that is a fair statement?
Correct.
Now, I will say this, um, we, there was a question that had come up last spring as to whether it would be in our financial interest if we just provided our own one-on-one aides as opposed to the IU, and I know what we pay an hourly rate to our aides versus the salary rate to the IU, but the salary rate sounded like it was, you know, quite a high rate, by the time as we looked at, um, what we would have to pay as opposed to just a straight dollar amount per hour, it really wasn't in our best interest financially, it's only going to end up being something like a thousand, twelve hundred dollars a year in our best interest, but when you take the large number of days that we would have to provide ourselves, that pool doesn't exist for us, we don't have that large pool, um, uh, employees who apply us that, that we can provide, so, it's only about twelve hundred dollars a year in our best interest, and, you know, we certainly don't, we don't pay twenty-two dollars an hour to our people, and they're making twenty-eight thousand dollars a year at the IU, and we're only paying, you know, maybe eighteen, it, it doesn't really add up, so, you know what I'm saying, there are a lot of add-ons that we do, like, you know, there's a whole list of things that they gave me from payroll that we don't take into account, that the employers would be like, they're not us.
In terms of unemployment, workforce, poverty, like, what's happening?
Correct, retirement, et cetera, all of these things, so, it, it's a little more adequate for us on that, and we're not responsible against them, so...
So, so we just wanted to make you aware that this company has a subcontractor, a IU who in turn provides us this services, it's one of the same on itself. I wonder if you have any, particularly if you're following a little bit of what you've done, somebody says, hey, this thing, courts are, it doesn't come fully up. Thank you, Sherri. Uh, any questions for Mrs. Dunn?
Um, Mrs. Dunn, if you could have written for me at the September meeting, I'd like to see the numbers, like, the N, North and South, will we end up with, I just want to make sure that those things are included.
Can you do that, with, you know, online, or, sorry, I don't think people can do that.
Okay, could you have that for me, and then maybe single two of the I, each, each...
Oh, yeah, yes. When you give us those figures, if there are any, um, G I S students, you designate those numbers separately, like, the gifted IEP students, or I, I, however you were doing, now, because there's, there's some, um, there's a, I don't say ways differently, but that's key information, just standalone gifted or gifted with IEP services as well, or either or. I'd, I need to explain practically the difference, so... Okay. We'll talk to you later.
Hi, Sherri, I got a question. Uh, I don't want to, I don't like to beat dead horses, but I, I gotta get some clarity on this one. Uh, we have the one position between North and South of half-days, right? We created another position, half-day of South, right, and the half-day of Smithfield, okay. This is seeing a little strange to have two half-day people at one school, as opposed to having one at that school and not moving them, having to pay them their files back and forth and everything else.
Well, but remember that the half-day at South is the half-day when you put the lights out.
Right.
New term, and then the, the half-day between North and South is more, they're doing two different days, two different services.
It's not the same certification though?
Same certification, but two different times of the day.
Okay, okay.
It's, it would be difficult, I think, to work out, I guess, could, and then how to, um, work to sit there, it would be a little bit longer.
Okay.
But...
We just need to keep an eye on it, and this way, I don't want to be in the center, we should make a difference, and, and, that's not going to stay, you know, so I just really want to keep an eye on it, it's not...
Yeah, so, I'm already, I had a conversation with Dr. Witt last week, where he was pointing out my attention to his learning support, and I'm thinking, hmm, I wouldn't be surprised if that I'm looking at another learning support book, this teacher that... that I'm really going to be looking at another learning support for the teacher, at, at least one of the two classes that's...
Well, maybe we could look at something as more than five, or right there, that's 10 minutes away.
Right. It's not quite there, but it could get there, and it's a possibility for it to land, but I hope it doesn't, but...
I understand.
You know, just whatever.
This is very important, more every year, so you don't really know until you're in the...
Right, and I'm not showing advice to put services when or not needed, but, you know, this is currently out there.
Right. Thank you.
Well, if we do this, this other, if we're going to discuss, if we back to, we can...
Remember, this is the way.
It's kind of the same.
So, I do have one other thing, and so, we can...
Hey, thank you, Sherri. Um, Mrs. Beazac?
Um, I just want to announce to the public, we are having a hard time with this, we have to perform today, and it will be in the space that our undergrad community, all the students have, it will be on office 50, hopefully that this is, um, announced to be further, um, that includes the nine period of our elementary schools respectively. Um, I do want to say that we are purchasing sets of Chromebook for our fifth grade through the, uh, kind of on budget, um, using our maximum package, we're allowed to fund it to get some of the devices that need, so we'd like to see that, so we're quickly allowing the elementary school to start with the fifth grade, the set of, um, with the, with the part that goes with the, for each of our elementary buildings. Um, uh, we are, um, working, uh, to support our professional government activities to two activity days scheduled in August, um, really looking at data and looking at some of the needs that teachers have, demonstrated by some of the performances on the, uh, assessors and really getting that. Also, uh, convening right early for the, the, the elementary principals, and, um, having, um, Mr. Flisco and Mr. Dillo along with some of those meetings that they can be, um, at least taken care of until we get these transition times administration places, making sure they're, they're okay and have their needs met also. Um, and also at this time, looking at the reduction plan, removing the new teachers and new hires, uh, prior to the service day on the 20th, and, uh, we work with those teachers for a day, about a half of the day, uh, keeping them on, seeing what the procedures and protocols are. So, this is just something that needs to be put in the meetings for, while, to say, because we're moving it, um, uh, down, looking to go, uh, working with teachers, buying the resources.
Any questions for Mrs. Beazac? I'm aware of Mr. Hutchinson.
Nothing at this time, we're just getting ready to high school, uh, given spoken everything that's going on at high school.
Uh, Mr. Barnes, any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Mr. Barnes, transportation?
Uh, thank you for, uh, attending the next meeting board into your new services this year. Uh, I've been working, uh, rerouting all summer, I believe the obligations that I suggested to be cut reroutes, in fact, I cut a four route route through, we were a 75% savings on that. And due to some of the rerouting I've done, I've, uh, done some things, basically that makes it a little bit more sense, just how it's all been. Uh, so I was able to, uh, even though we have to add three monitors this year due to, uh, new guidelines for the city's grid outside, overall, I was able to cut two monitors of course, so with the, uh, monitor, this is a cut, that'll be over $17,000 in savings, and the, uh, fourth bus, uh, we'll see a saving, but over $36,000, so, uh, do what we can to, uh, keep things aligned to, to meet, uh, board's targets for these practices.
Bill, update on, on the, how things progressing with propane and insulation and all the watches coming in, good for the start of the school year?
Yeah, uh, I would address all my concerns with SBA, they have a contingency plan for any of the areas that are a concern, uh, propane specifically, uh, they said, they will pay for any, uh, fueling the buses directly from the truck, if the tank's not in place, however, they, Ferrellgasse is saying that the tank will be there in place, uh, talked about one week ago today, they said it'll be there in place in two weeks, so a lot of weeks from now, it'll be there. Uh, the buses are arriving, uh, there are state police inspections, I believe, starts next week, what is it, 18 or 16? Their office has, uh, they have a temporary office they're going to be using until they do construction, that's a new site, uh, it's a office trailer, it's in place, the electric has been installed, and, uh, there's a lot of gravel and grading, if you've been passed there, it looks a lot different than it had, uh, the, uh, the reinforcement that they have across the country. So, I have a comfort level where we stand, and if, uh, there are any issues, we have a contingency for any concern.
Any questions for Mr. Barnes? Thanks, Bill. Um, Chief Malakian?
We're just getting ready for the upcoming years, first about three weeks. Uh, I believe there's a need to be an executive session, uh, to discuss the contracts, and, uh, what was that? The question is, you...
How about the bag scanner?
The bag scanners, uh, they're waiting your final, uh, vote, they're, they're holding two of them for me, uh, they, they guarantee the price.
And what's the, the installation time, from the time you...
It, it, it just totally depends. Uh, they come out of New Hampshire, and the way I gather it from him, they're, they're not going to send two of them down there alone, they're, they're going to have a couple more for on the way down and on the way back, and other installations, so, uh, he had an installation that was coming last week that we didn't get on, but he has the information, we're waiting for board to act on it, and I'll email him the final information he needs as far as, uh, whether we'll unload them, uh, what we need them on, and things like that. They, they, they will fit through front doors, uh, side-wise every day, and they'll send them down on lift trucks, so we can either tell the board to get them off.
This is a, this is a large purchase, almost $35,000. Do you think there's any way that, that you, uh, say you, or both of them can get it down, can guarantee they have any time to install, or will they want to ask the room to negotiate there?
I try. Uh, actually, those are refurbished, those two, and we're getting a better price. If we bought, if we bought brand new and bought refurbished, they would probably double, triple price. I mean, they're over $60,000 we need for that, so, and, and talking, and talking to this gentleman on the phone, this scanner is more than what we need, however, because it's a better scanner, it will last us longer. Uh, he said, "Well, maybe for schools, they sell us smaller system," but he said, "With the number that we're going to be running through on a daily basis, we're better off with the, the higher-grade scanners, since it's refurbished." If he was going to sell, snub through a student, he tells me buy a step-down model that's going to be a little cheaper, new, but still more expensive than the refurbished.
Any questions for Chief Malakian?
Uh, under administrative, one other thing I had, um, quite saw in your packet, that, um, PDD is requiring all districts in the Chromebook to name a, an administrator as our security, uh, stage pool, security, so on and so forth administrator. Uh, Mr. Hutchinson will be named as that person for the purpose of the state, working with Chief Malakian. Uh, Chief is our, obviously our chief in place, and Mr. Hutchinson will have close contact with Chief, but work, but all districts are charged by all this certain part to name an administrator as your, um, security administrator.
Is that under the Act 44?
I believe so, Chief, I'm standing. There's, there's some other things that have to be done with that by the end of August there. So, that's kind of just come out recently, so it's, I want to make sure we have it on the agenda, if you have any questions in mind, uh, you know, that's something that, you know, we've kind of been doing these things already, working together, but Mr. Hutchinson will be named that person for the district for purposes, like we said last week, okay? Any, uh, further questions? I go. Do you have, do you have enough manpower, school force? We're, we're working on it. Uh, we had some names submitted, uh, they need help, it's been applications, I've, I've been taking phone calls, uh, I have an application down there, trying to get hold of the individual, or something I was going to ask at the exec session, uh, you know, we still have a couple sub-rooms to draw on, uh, so hopefully we'll have enough to get by. Uh, the other, I've touched base with Algeany County, West Florida County, Bieber County Community Colleges, they run 120 classes and some 235 classes, so I touched base with all those colleges and their placement departments, that if they had any recent graduates, they could complyers out to them, uh, it's a cheap way for me that I advertise, rather than putting a thing in the newspaper, but I'll probably have Kathy running that paper, because technically, we're down two, two full-time boards, you know, and, uh, we're going to have to do some juggling, because I'm going to have to take somebody by, we don't get somebody, aren't, we've got to take somebody daylight, go to one that afternoon, five days a week, but that, perhaps somebody at that high school for 2:30 to 10:30, or it'll be pay loss down there.
Okay, any further questions? Uh, there is an evening executive session, I asked you to take a five to 10 minute break.
That's important, that's important. That's the first one, I would like to report in.
No, the week is full.
Employment contracts, and I'd like to add something for student confidentiality, we're going to be up today, only just...
Did y'all hear the man out there? While you were yelling, it was nice to have him in the background, everybody gets a lot of that, so...